Back at it again. More Wani Kani, more Boon Pro. More reviews. More misery, more realizing I don't know fucking Japanese at all. That's fine. Also probably should swear less, but I don't think I can stop. It's also fine. Sheep. Pitsushi? Pitsuji? Alrighty. Many thousands. Okay. Beast. Yes. Oh, yes. Kubini Nado, is that to get? Yes, it is. Nanzan. Uh, USA. Oh. Kubini Nado. Hey, Sachi. How are you, buddy? Lowercase letter. Adu. Uh, hundred. Now, we're gonna have a fucking... Ato. Mm-mm, it's not that. Good to hear it. Good to hear it, my friend. Not sure what this one was. Hmm, Konya. Tonight. Oh, fuck, there it is. To exist. Komoji. Uh. Be. Koku. Awesome. Masterpiece. Uh. Is it Taesaku? Yes, love that. Yeah, with Anki. I, man, I have a hard time getting into Anki. Like, using it. Like, it just, it's not. Like, it shows you what the word means, right? And you can make your own decks, but I just don't have the patience to actually do that myself, you know? For some reason? For some... Yep, cool. Okay. Tonight. Uh, yeah. It's youth. It was youth. Bit of one with youth. Yo. Younger. Sister. Oh, no, it was older sister. Omo. Think. Alrighty. Okay. This is archeology, right? Konka, no. Koko. Right, koko. Koko. Gaku. Hell, yes. Konya, tonight. You whisper into one's ear. Senen. Fantastic. North. What is I moto? I moto would be a younger sister. That would be the vocabulary reading. And then, uh, me. So. Ma, i would be the, uh... The noun reading. Saki. Kitao. Kitao. Yo. And ki. Kitao. Hey, no problem, Sachi. Happy to help. Youth. So this one would be. Be her older sister. After, uh, PM. Alrighty. Mimi e. Mimi uchi. Fantastic. Archaeology. Shit. Man, shit. Otto. Otoko. Fucking awesome, man. Angle. Hmm, that was color. Shit. Alrighty. This was, uh, travel, no, honest, right? Chiki, no. Chiki. Chikiko? Mm-mm, that ain't right. Yo. Cool. Fuck. Chill, cool. There it is. Oh, go. Okay. Come on. Come on. Figure it out. Remember, remember the things that you're doing. Kaisha. Fantastic. Mole. Say. Umbly. Awesome. Older sister. Company. Hell, yes. Uh, yeah, so Wani Kani is, uh, vocabulary practice, so teaching you the kanji and words. Uh. Right? So this is be science or ka. And then if you pop this, I can read down meaning, combination, what radicals make it. Similar kanji vocabulary it's found in, right? So. Color, Jesus Christ. No, it's not a hoe. Oh, what the fuck was master? Hmm. Uh, I mean, you can try it for free up to level three, right? So, give it a shot. If you're into it, I'd say use it, but yeah, Anki is absolutely boring. I, this isn't probably what I've been told the most efficient way to learn. But, you know? That's, that's fine. I'm not worried about it. I have lots of time to, uh, learn. Go. Cool. Some. Kaku. Right. And I like the way they explain on here better than, uh... Than Anki, right? Because Anki doesn't really give you an explanation. Yushii. Rokuse. Jesus Christ. I love them, actually. Be. No. Ashi kubi. Ah, fuck that up. Ashi kubi. Quiet. So, no, it's not zen, it is zen. Doesn't zen. Fuck, uh... Kunii. Nah. Ma. It's not honest. Non-stop, of course. Master. Oto. Uh, shit. What are you? Master. Joki. Joki, jichou. Don't think so. Yeah. And. Rokuse. No, gakunen. Ashi kubi. Uh, suspension. Subete. Oh. What's fucking say? Non-stop. Hmm. Konbi ni. Being store, uh... Ahead, um, no. Before. School year. Gakunen, uh, ankle. Ankle. She. To be photographed. Fantastic. University, uh, I... Subete. Oh. Awesome. Voice, are you fucking kidding me? Versity. Uh, ma e. Ikidu. How is this, uh... To be born. Mm-mm. Shit. Didn't think so. To live, awesome. Four. It's. It's a duh. Uh, center. Ashiru. No, it's hashiru. Mm-hmm. Chushi. Oh. Say. Ikidu, awesome. Kon. Konen. Konen. Awesome. No. To live, alrighty. To stop. Right? Pause. Is that also suspension? Fuck me. This year. Free. Boku. Moku, boku. Alrighty. Something to... Akade. He has. Ben. Sha. Uh, mm-hmm. Shisha, going to the office. Point. Moku. Okay, hashiru. Kingdom of Heaven. Tengoku. Right, Tengoku. Fuck, yeah. It's not on. Point, fuck. Damn it. Ten, I'm gonna fuck that one up a lot. To run. Brighter. Okay. Usachi. Suspension. Tengoku. Se. Ten. It's confusing. You know, uh... It gets easier, you know? She. To go to work. Fuck. She. Shot. Just give it a shot, you know? I mean, it's, the thing with it is it's gonna start you at the very beginning, right? So if you already knew some stuff, it's gonna seem really slow to you. So that's something you gotta take into account. You can do a whole bunch of lessons, but once you do the lessons, they're only gonna give you so many reviews, right? Land. I think it's. Chi, chichi, tochi. World. The big rest means... Generally, or is it originally? Yes. Ochi. Love that for me. To go to work. Awesome, eat. Uh, shoku. Fuck, I did that wrong. Okay. Tai, kai. See, that's not gonna be a taiju. It's a taikyu. Dai tai plus dai tai, fuck. Entry. Uh, meta. Then we have train car. Right? Shadio. Shadio. All of Japan. All Japan. Yeah, no. Uh, yo. Shoku. Scooter. Uh, no, dai tai. This is to take out. Fantastic. Hmm. Older sister. That's it. Awesome. House. Suspicion, oh, yes. Sen. Ni home. Love that. Shadio. To fix. Not gonna be jiki se. Nausa. Nausa. And ne. Sun. Skin. Okay, shikata. Uh, ne. Can't be helped. Can't be helped. Jimin. Uh, fuck, blue. That was close, uh, both hands. No, it was both hands, shikite? No, liote. Older sister. Hmm. Ryokata? It's gonna be chiki kata, isn't it? That's really, oh, riya, oh, fuck. Riya. He. Se. Okay. The fuck is this? We gonna try. We gonna get it. Maybe. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. I really fucking hate. Katakana. I'll figure it out eventually. Figure out what that first one is. It is. It is. What are you? It's a te, isn't it? Yeah, so there'd be, oh, depata, department store. There we go. There it is. Yo, su. Really, oh, it's, hmm, nausa. Mm-hmm. On ne. Did I fuck that up? Really? Okay. The both directions. Okay. Both, both sides, both ways. Oh, god damn. Okay. On ne. No, that's... Yeah, on ne. What did I fuck that? Form. Okay. Oh, no. It's nagai, nagai. Just take nagai, love god. Please. Please take nagai. I didn't think so. Chou. Awesome. Both. Both, 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 both. Now. Both days. Both days, it was riya. Mm-hmm. Run. Oku. Mm-hmm. That's fine. Imo. To. Okay. Naus. Christ. Riya ho. Sai. Both days, and then riya jitsu. There we go. Both sides. Long. And, then, ju. Holy. You're round, awesome. Now. Naus. Uh, bright. Oh, no. Matodo. Hmm. Sutodo. Nah. Behind, ushiro. Talent. Chou. Younger. Sister. Year. Ashi. Mm-hmm. See. Being Kai. Okay, fu. I know fu, and it's not gonna be fume. It is fume. Not bright. Unknown, hell, yes. Chou. Fuck. Hi. It's so bad. Meh. Oh, shit, that's on. It's not that. Means star. Se. The star, the sun and all the others you protect with your trusty saber. That's a stupid monomic. Okay. Honest. Love that for me. Shou jiki. Sukudu, oh. Make, and I believe it is sukudu. Hell, yes. Chou. Chiki. Awesome. Sukudu. Sukudu. It's south, right? Minami. Hmm. Kai. Ashi. Hmm. Radada. Pakada. Radada. So, why didn't I try so? That sucks. Hmm. Okay. What the fuck was this? Katou. Toro. Sutodo. Ushiro. South. Anata, yuu. Star. Soul. Cheap. One's thirties, uh... Ni. No. Sanju. Sanju. Sanju da. Okay. Ushiro. Before, fuck. Behind. Kuchini suru. Kuchini suru. Is that to go out, to mention, to say? Alrighty. Subete, not subete. Matode. After. Hey, mystic. After. Matode, fantastic. Se. Matode. To mention. Behind. With my son. Excuse me. Jose. Skillful. Jose. One's thirties. Ah, kinki desu. Uh, kinki desu ka? Oh, fuck, yeah, blasted through those. Hello, darkness, my old friend. Boon Pro, my misery. Love Boon Pro. It's my favorite. Not sure if you knew that, how much I truly love Boon Pro at times. Not sure if you knew that, how much I truly love Boonpro at times. Good to hear it, misk- mystic, uh, I can't even speak. Shiyasei. Pass, oh, pass standard, ah, shiyas. Su, yesuikata. Yes. Oh, no, what did you get? What sentence did you get? Cause Boonpro has a sense of fucking humor, we know this. Like a for real sense of humor. There you go, no. It's... We'll bring that one back. Konno. Demo, no. Demo. Konno. Sumo. Fuck. Somewhere. Don, toko. Konni. I was gonna get that one. Imamate. Uh-huh, until now. Hmm. Oh, something, mystic, that's so advanced. What do you want me to do with that? Uh, that's great. I learned on here, uh, Haruna. And only on here. Madaa, no, madae. Jesus Christ. Nade, madae. Nade, madae. Homoyomo. Uh, this one is, uh, Boonpro. Tekka. This is not an adjective, it is an adjective, tekai. Kute. Tekka, taka, kute, really? Oh, negative. Yeah, Japanese sentence structure is complicated as fuck, hey, no problem, Haruna. Alright. Taka, kuna. Ku. Okay. Yes. Look at me go. This year. Hmm. And then, no, that's not it, this year, fuck. Oh, hell yeah. I'm going for the third time in, uh, February. Fantastic place to visit. Quite enjoy it. I still won't be able to speak shit. Oh, shoot, I'll probably. Jump around a lot. You know, uh, so usually I get the rail pass and then I just take the shikensun and jump all over the fucking place. Like last time I went to Tokyo. Kyoto, Osaka, Hiroshima. Kone. Uh, Ukoka, Okayama. Some town by Mount Fuji. And then just day tripped it out of those places. Nakon, kotoshi, fuck. Atatakai. Samui no de. Samui no de, atatakai. Eya ni, ito, shitaidesu. Fukusaki. Hmm. Oh. Don't die yourself, Haruna, you know, put in the effort, I'm sure you'll pick it up. Hey, Vivian. What's up with that? How dare you? Oh, that's awesome. I personally felt like Tokyo is, uh, played out, like it's not enough. It's, it's a big city, right? It's kinda nice to go out to other places. So if you have the chance, dip out, it's super fast on the shikensun to jump to places. Didn't intend. Ikku. Sumodi. Sumodi. Wa, nah. Kappa? Fuck yeah. That felt great. Yeah, Kyoto is awesome. I walked all over Kyoto. First, I wanna eat something because I'm hungry. First. Fuck. Ah, there it is, mazu. Right? Mazu, fuck. Went in order to hand over, went to go, okay. Destination of a journey, past standard. Watashi ni. Kita, right? Now. Went to go. Yeah, I've heard Duolingo isn't great, but, you know, other people swear by it, I haven't tried it. I like this. Plus I make like one, one penny a week streaming, so that's pretty sweet. Predominantly from corn given to me by Vivian, so. Thanks Vivian for donating your live one penny to me. I appreciate you. That one penny is gonna add up. In a year, I'll have three dollars and sixty-five cents. It'll be great. I'll be able to buy a candy bar. You should say, uh, gai kokujin, I was told that's substantially more polite. Hmm, to hand over the money, alright. Watashi. Destination of a journey, hey, no problem. And I could be wrong. Yeah, you need to give me more pennies, Vivian. I need to at least, you know, um... Get. A drink. Alright, watashi. Watashi, that is a fucking verb, yeah. Wakame o watashi. God, that's skillful, that's skillful Japanese. Hihongo, it's skillful Japanese language, right? Josu is skillful. Hihongo is the Japanese language. You mean Organic is cheating on me? We're gonna have words with him when he shows up. How dare he go to mom's stream? Shouldn't pay her child support, bullshit. Watashi ni. Went in order to hand over. There we go. There we go. Mo. Sed. To i. Toita. Oh. To iki. Talking, no, 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 no. To iki. Past polite. Fuck this up. You're gonna summon him? He tried to summon host without you last night and it didn't work. He gave it a solid effort and it just did not. That was fantastic. To iki, no, what am I doing, not iki, Jesus Christ. No wonder I'm fucking up. Imashita. Come to be fatter. Come. Fu. Futori. It. No, futori. Fut, ah, te, mm-hmm. That's what I was gonna fuck it, to come, uh, kita, right? Yes. Hey, Kenta, hello. You're talking away? He should still be in bed. Aw. What'd you pay him off? Hey, konnichiwa. That's awesome. Please take a train, ride and go. Continue to intensify. Go on, continues. Not the... Right, not the... I didn't go. Ikku. Mm-mm. Eighta. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, Boonpro. She probably found out his phone number, called him, bothered him a bunch. Will come. Kudu, right? On past standard, there it is. Kade wa. Kade wa kudu desho. Happy ten before. Been done in the past. Ah, but, uh... Oh, no, I'm gonna fuck this one up. Takainiku. Takainiku o. Tabete. Before. Abeta. Oh, kotoga, of course it is. Brother, what's happening? I don't know, I fucked that up. Oh, bother, oh, I thought I said brother. Dan, asobi. Koini, asobi ni. Ki, taku na. There we go. Hey, mine's pretty basic. So. You're gonna see someone who knows what they're doing, it'd be. Vivian actually knows what they're doing, I don't know shit. You wanna actually learn something? Watch her stream. You wanna watch nonsense? Watch my stream. You wanted to find out who Organic likes more? Watch both streams, clearly today, it's not me. Independently, oh, fuck. Would this be like the independent, like? Organic likes you best, alright? We all gonna fight over Organic? Is that what's gonna happen? The battle for Organic's love? Hmm. Jiditsu. There it is. I will go to drink tonight. Destination of a journey with a purpose. Nomii. Ni, iki. Right, iki. Kimasu. There it is. Oh, that's tonight. Konya. Nomii ni ikimasu. Someday. Okay. Shukyo ga. Owatte nai no de. Asobi ni iki, no. Oh, yeah, iki. No. Ikanae. De. Budasi. Budasi. There it is. Yeah, for now, uh... I'll probably study, maybe someday if I get good at this, something else, but for now, just Japanese. My brain couldn't handle any more than that. Oh. So not that one. Ko, no. Ko. Ko. Kade wa. Right? Kade wa. Oh, thanks for the corn, now I have a penny for this week, I appreciate it. You're gonna need to pump that up a bit more. Give me all of your money. Taee. Uh, I have looked at Korean, but I don't... I've been to Korea and I like going to Korea, but... I didn't enjoy it as much as Japan, maybe someday I'll go back. And then I would probably look into Korean more. Taite. Eh? Still hasn't answered, negative, progressive, polite, unexpected. Means in a state of not being done. Oh, that's a, madaa, that's what I'm doing wrong, kare wa madaa. Kotate imasan. What did I do wrong here? Oh, missed one. Madaa. Kotate imasan. Yeah, I hear it's pretty quick for learning, like it's... Like relatively simple. Uh... So maybe next. Once I figure this one out, at the rate I'm going, I'll need at least five years to figure this out. Before. Been done in the past. Ita. Kotoga harimasen. Narimas. Okay. Now ever. Kode ga. Ke hon. Didi, 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 da. Do do da, do do, do do. I mean, I speak to a couple people. Plus chat's pretty helpful. I have a Japanese guy I talk to. I have a Norwegian guy I talk to. I have the internet. But yeah, it's basically on my own. However. Baka. Fuck yeah. Intend. Suri. This. The essay, make writing, uh, sakubun. Ashita. Ashita. Madé. Madeni, oh. Oh, the intel. Oh, hmm hmm. Ni sakubun no. Shiage nai. Shiage na. Kute wa. Ikemasen. Way of teaching. My way, okay. Now, this one needs to write the no. Ashi. No, she. Ah, there parts of life. I can only immerse so much, you know? I have a kid, work. So, I only really get to do this at night. Sometimes I listen to podcasts when I'm at work, when I get a chance. Ashi, no, ashii. Is it ashii du? Katta? No, so fucking wrong here. Ashii, mm, no do. St- stem, isn't it? Yep. Noun verbs stem, mhm. Verb no. Yep. We became good friends just by he shoni. See that a lot. He shoni. Chikano. Time. He shoni chikano. Subet. Subes, soup, no soup. Yeah. Uh. I'd, I don't know. Hard to say. I mean, I've learned the hiragana, so. It's not bad, but I mean. My keyboards in. Uh. In this anyways, right? Hmm. So it's, it does make it easier to do this, this way. Gotta fix that, apparently. Let's see. Oh, nope, that crashed again. Bring it back. Alright. No, not at all. I am not smart enough for that. Not even a little bit. Not even a splash. Whoa. Did that go? Hmm. Wow, wow, wow. Gotta fix all the things. It's all fucked. I also fail at streaming a lot, like I mess up a lot. Uh. Super crashed, Vivian. Apparently, it didn't even look like it crashed. It was still going. It wasn't even frozen. It didn't even drop out and. I had no idea. Yeah, I'm working on it, I guess. I really hate. The TikTok studio. Oh, really? Well, maybe someday I'll try it. There we go. Now we'll get this back up and running. I tried, uh, years ago, like I bought books and everything. I just couldn't get into it. So for Stream Labs. I learned, Vivian, that you have to, um. Fifty percent of your content has to be gaming. For some reason now, it's a new thing started beginning of July, which explains why I kept getting kicked off of Stream Labs for it. And TikTok should be back up. Allegedly. Yeah, I'm about to game, you know? Uh, no. Hmm, lucky there. I'm never gonna get that one. Hey, look at that. Now I can get more corn. What a deal. See if this stays working. Odds are. Oh, ChatGPT for programming? You can use ChatGPT to help, uh. Uh, learn Japanese. Sorta. Yeah, look at that. We're back. Triple corn, three cents. Now we're talking. My. Nichi, right? Anichi. Yeah, it felt so wrong. Uh, so I can use it for like Wani Conny and type in for. Languages. To what I are up to my level that I've learned and I can write, uh, stories with the Kanji I know. It's pretty handy. Yeah, here you are. About fucking time. That's car. That's car. Twenty day. Twenty day of the month. Stupid TikTok studio. Such a pain in the ass. I can't even use anything, you know? Anything else, um. Uh. To stream besides TikTok studio since I didn't do gaming. So dumb. Like you can't use, uh, stream elements, nothing. It has to be stupid. She. Shoka. Hmm, stronger nuance. Won't you study? Senka? Okay. There is only one game I wanna play, Vivian. And stream it. And I still don't have, uh. The beta key yet. Hopefully, before the end of the year, he'll send him out. Kira, na adjective. Kira i. Yeah, that's the one. De wa. De wa, right? Kira de wa. Nakute, right? Yes. Have a sign up somewhere, uh. Well, I have a beta key entry, like I, I am on the list to get beta key. Uh, he gives them out on his Discord. There, no. Uh, there. Yeah, apparently it went down. I had no idea, cuz it didn't even crash. It just, uh. Went down. Stopped streaming. I've no idea. To think. Kawa? Mm hmm. Hmm, kanga. Haha. Fair enough. I mean, my cue is to. Baka. No, 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 no. This guy. There we go. My cue to go to bed is when I finish, right? Mai ni chi. We should probably get rid of the frigana for that one. Mai ni chi undo shimashita. Deska yasete imasen. Also, it was hot as fuck here today. And I realized that my hot as fuck is not. Hot for everybody else, but it is for me. And it was too fucking hot. It was seventy degrees. Four things. Already more. And I was dying more. Shoshin. 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 Tota. I want. Hmm. She. There it is. Some we. Just so cold. Some. Movie. I, I don't want it. We don't need it here. It's alright, it's supposed to go back to like fifty-eight and rain. And then we had another tsunami warning today. It's fine. Saku. No. Saku. Hmm. Hmm hmm. Should I? There it is. Yeah, there was a, um, uh. Eight point seven earthquake. There were tsunami warnings on the east, on the west coast. They were in Hawaii. Uh, my buddy in Japan messaged me and asked me if we were getting them in okay, cuz they were getting. There is a bunch of evacuations in Japan for the tsunami warning. Fucking brutal. One's complete life. Right? Not isho. And say, there it is. Jinsei ho. One's knife. I mean. I didn't get one and he's inland, but I was talking to him, um. About an hour and a half ago. And. As far as I know, it was, there was nothing. Just by. Okay, no, 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 no. Okay. There it is. Nanzumi kara o mita. Mitadake de. Se kaku ga adu, adui. Bad. Toubun kata. Oh, wakata. Hmm, where's organic? Apparently he doesn't like me. It's fine. Man has a life. What are we gonna do when he goes back to work? Be sad every time he doesn't show up? Nah. That's what the train wreck's for. I get my, I get my four hours. Cool. Or is it gonna be fusset? There it is. Doyada, a lot of. Kusan. Kusanyashi o, takusan sushi o. Baberu no. Da da, dare deska? Plus, if I getting fired would be what, it'd be, uh, min toksai, so pain in the ass. Or too much work inconvenient, don't feel like it. Literally, we'll do it. Non-pass standard, conform. Decided going with non-pass. Shit, that. Okay, cool. Hmm. Me, I really suck at that one. To add. Dasu. No. Dasu. There we go. Haha. I mean, we have host. I see him creeping back there. See, there he is. Yeah, I'm all alone. Okuda. Yeah, are you in? He tried to summon you last night and there was no Kevin, so it didn't work. Hunger Junior. Mm hmm. Haha. That's fair. Did not, it didn't become quiet. Does that gonna be gaining? Mm hmm. She is. Ka. Nina de, Nina da na. Nina da na. Nina de. Nah. Nope. Isuka. Nina. Hmm. You're gonna try? You're gonna try and summon the old, uh, organic? I know. I'm gonna get it. Is it gonna be Nina da? Nina da na katta? Hmm, see, I did the wrong. The one, wrong one there. Haha. Uh, we'll see if it works. I mean, we lost Kevin when the live fucked up. Uh, organic isn't here, but we got host and that's all that matters. Coming or come to be. No, I thought he didn't work until, uh, Friday, right? Uh, August first, I think school started. For him. Nakku. Na. Nade. Notte. Kita, right? Has come. Oh, fuck yeah. I could've swore he said Friday. But you know? I have been wrong many times in my life, so. Hard to say. Kyono, kyono. Bon. Mango han. Ono mango han wa none. Decided going with. Nish, nisudu. There it is. There it is. Uh, this is uh boon pro. Mata. Kuta. Matakuta. You're fucking losing me, host. Are you still in Scotland? I assume you're still in Scotland. Okay. Okay. No, it's not that. The dirty. Shit. Oh, no. Hmm, keep an eye. There it is. That's fine. Too clean to do. Special class. Used for many different actions. Too clean. Cleaning. To do. Sudu. Sudu. Okomo. Foreign country. Koko wa. It's not gonna be the uh Guy. Oku. This. But. It's okay. Ke de. Demo. Is it ke de demo? No. Ke de, it is ke de demo. Domo. Fuck. Now we'll bring it back. S. I still don't know if it was today. I could message him on Discord and ask. I'll ask. You never know. Crisis. Oh shit. It's not. Is it kicking? Diekeen. Ah. Well. We'll get it back. To ega. Uh, do. That's no. I know, shit. That's so sad. There's no one left? Is it just you and me, host? Is that that my life tonight? No one's here anymore. Nah, Mystic's in here. Well, I guess I'm not entertaining tonight. You will have that. See, we got Mystic. That's what'll happen when you fuck the stream up and it crashes and then everybody leaves. I know. Hmm hmm. Wakado. There it is. Yeah, but Mystic's here. In solidarity, the one that. Noah. Kotomo. Uh, well, I didn't even know it crashed. It just, it still looked like it was streaming and it wasn't streaming. For like Probably ten minutes. Takainowa. Kodomo no. Minkyoda. Vivian's back, so there's that. Yeah. You'll have that. She came back to give me more corn, so we have that. She, you there? No. Ochi. Fuck. Jesus Christ. Did you not watch it enough times? You need to see raccoons to make yourself feel better? Got it. Ra. Raishu made. Next week, raishu made. Ni kono. Kanji, kanji no. Kaki. Jun. Oh. Oboe. Must be done. Okay, oboe. Alright. Uh huh. Ku te wa. Right? Nakute wa, sedewa, terwa, shit. You can, nah, it's probably dewa. Oh, fuck yes. At least I got those ones. Hold and come. Okay. Yeah. I am back, Kevin. My shit got all fucked up. I didn't, I don't know. I didn't even know it stopped. It still looked like it was going on my end. I was talk, I was talking to someone on kick. The next thing you know. I'm on my own. And then host tried to summon uh Organic. Didn't work. So we had the opposite going on. It's good stuff. Kevin tried to summon him too. He will come. Hehehe. Okay, more. The. Could do. First game. Hold and come. Could do would be. Kita. Or it's gonna be could do. Motte. Kita. There we go. Hold and come. Love that for me. Yeah. Yes. Su su i sa su katta. Interested. Their mind is focused. Hmm. You're not that far behind. You seen me try to speak? Uh. It's an interesting way to summon him. I mean, he could be at work. Interested. I could've swore it was Friday, but You never know. You never know. I fucking thought it was key. Any Viking chants? Hmm, can't say I do. Hehehe. That's fair. I mean, that's All valid reasons. Cheers. It's uh Ah ni. This year. Kotoshi. First. Mo. Su, mozu. Masu. Ride and go, okay. Na de na. Hehe, eat. Eh, ride and go. I mean, we're probably gonna get through without organic showing up at all. Sad day. Now we know. We know the answer. I've been exchanged. Abbe. See ya, man. Thanks for stopping by, host. Have a good drive. Yeah, exactly. That's exactly it. It'll be your train wreck this weekend. I'll just go to bed early. What a deal. No complaints. See you, Kevin. We'll catch you later. Done before. Ta be ta. Kotoka. Ah de. Intermittent de. She. Hmm. Hmm. Jidetsu. That's what it was. Okay. No, she eh. Katta. And now it's just us. Would you look at that? Akke de. No. Yeah. Akke de. Just by. Thinking. Kanga. Kanga. Ton. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, Mystic. You're always so quiet, you know? You're just the sneaky one. Sneaky. The white. Oh. Oh, there he is. Ha. Right after host left. Ha. That's amazing. Hehehe. Host and Kevin try to summon you. And Vivian. Hehehe. That's amazing. Good morning, sunshine. What we've established now is that it's still fifty fifty. Four hours ago, what were you doing? Why were you up so fucking late, dude? Ugh. Brother, ew. What, are you having a train wreck? That's why I stay up late. Hey, Eric, good to see you again, bud. Was it hot? It's hot as fuck in here right now. It's like ninety degrees in this room, I swear to God. Windows open. It's horrible. I hate it. Hmm. Been there, done that. Ah no. Shit, I fucking knew it was. We'll do it. Oh, God, that's hor, it was seventy degrees here and That's miserable for Alaska. We don't have that ever. To decide on. Or I'll convert that for our good friend Organic. I think it's be seventeen. Nope, it's twenty one. It's hot as fuck. Twenty one's hot as fuck. It means something funny in Spanish. What is, what does it mean in Spanish? Feel free to share. Decided on going with ok, nisudu. There go. Young. Hunger. Kita ni. But. Oh shit. This guy. Hmm. Taga, no. Da ikke, no. Ikke ire. Domo. No. Dakke, ah, dakere domo. There it is. Dakin. The no. Kawaa. Baka. There it is. Jidetsu. I mean, probably. Kidoi. No. Fuck. Should I, I should know that one. Okay, but. Ah. Ke. The. Domo. There it is. Wakado. White. Kidoi. Oh, Jesus. It's a, you go to work my Friday, right? That's, that's what we. There was an argument, whether it could be Wednesday, Friday, and I'm back in the seventies. Love that for me. Friday, that's what I thought. Train wreck? We do those uh Saturday, my Saturday is Sunday. As long as organic's available. He's a busy guy. He's got a lot going on in his life. You know? He might have plans. Traveling. Hey wizards. Hanging out. Learning Japanese. Having a great time. Chilling. Telling Organic to go back to bed. A hundred and sixteen days. Uh. Hmm. Sounds very hot. Like miserably hot. What? What will it be in? Uh, what temperature will it be there? I mean, can you do that in Florida? Isn't that the same weather? Like, really? I mean, can't you do that in Florida? Isn't that the same weather, like realistically? I mean, I assume it's the same weather. I mean, I haven't been to Florida in fucking years. Okay. I sure am. It'll be the third time. Ugh. That's too hot. At least you don't get. I mean, I don't know. Do you guys get as many tsunami warnings as we do there? In Florida? And I guess Puerto Rico? I assume not. Cause two in one month is too many, by the way. That's a lot of tsunami warnings. Oh. Hmm. For a first visit? Like. What kind of duration of a visit? Are you going for a week? Two weeks? Three weeks? Four weeks? Cause that would, uh, a week? Oh, shit. Uh. Hmm. I would say probably gonna spend most of your time in Tokyo then, realistically. If you have a chance, go to Kyoto. I'd say Kyoto and Tokyo, if you could split the week up between the two of those. A week's not really enough time. Two weeks, if you could swing it, would be, would be better. Well, that's good. We get all the big fucking earthquakes here. Bullshit. All the big earthquakes. Oh. I was 100% gonna stream. When I was in Japan, yes. It's gonna fuck up the whole timing schedule though, because it's gonna be. Before now, it's gonna be all fucked up. Uh, we had tsunami advisories. So not a warning this time. We had a tsunami warning last week or the week before. Yeah, it's gonna be six hours before. Now, I guess, if I, if I do this. I mean, genuinely, you don't sleep. At all. We know this. We know the truth about you, Vivian. No rest for you. But. I mean, I get sleep, just not a lot of it. And I'm gonna go to sleep. So that's gonna be it for me today. Organic, go back to bed. You need more rest. If you didn't fall asleep with your phone in your hand already. Oh, the raccoon powers. There it is. You're gonna get four hours of sleep and you're gonna get up? Send me or whatever. Uh. Fuck that. Go to bed. Sleep till noon. Send it. We'll catch y'all later. Bye.